Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Nations under God.
God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. So I'll try and, I know, I didn't print off the agenda, so I, you'll have to help me through that, Kristen, please.
Sure. This is Kristen. First, we have addition or deletion of agenda items. So first, I'll just do my obligatory. We are being recorded this evening for the purpose of uploading to Peg TV, so please be sure to state your name before speaking this evening. So this is Kristen. We have two additions this evening. First would be a policy discussion following the email that I had sent the board members regarding certain policies for your review. And I suggest that that could be added under old or unfinished business or new business, whichever is preferred. And then the other addition is Maureen Brown is here this evening under appearances by local citizens and visitors. And those are the only two requested additions, and there are no deletions this evening.
Okay, thank you. So will you do, please do the introduction?
Sure. So introduction, this is Kristen. Introduction of those present members in attendance. We have Mike Beecher, John Malcolm, Bob Jones, Jessica Van Orte, and Rich Hewlett. Others in attendance, we have Kristen Powers, Keith Mason, Maureen Brown, John Sabatka, Collins Stabeel, Deb Hawkins, and Martha and Bob Shoneman. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Approval of the previous minutes.
And this is Kristen, too. There are two sets of minutes for approval this evening. I didn't mention that. There's the Select Board minutes from the last meeting on March twenty, or sorry, February twenty-third, as well as the organizational meeting minutes from March third, I believe.
Okay. Everybody reviewed the minutes from the last meeting?
Well, I reviewed the ones from the, um, the most recent meeting.
The, uh, okay, I guess the last meeting is the, was it two twenty-nine? Kristen, would that be the last regular meeting of the Select Board? Two twenty-three?
Two twenty-three, yep.
Okay, so, so you reviewed them, Jessica?
I reviewed the ones from our meeting last week. But I move that we, can we move that we approve both of them?
Uh, I probably need to do one at a time.
All right, this is Jessica. I move that we approve the minutes from last Wednesday.
Okay, that was the organizational meeting.
Donald's second.
Okay.
There, um, this is Kristen. Sorry, there is, sorry, my internet is saying that it's not so great, so I apologize if it's interfering with you guys, but there was, um, two edits to the organizational meeting minutes. The first one is that Bob Jones was listed twice. He made such an impact that he was listed twice on the attendance list, so I've edited that. Um, and also in item one, instead of just swore in, it was swore in or affirmed um, based on the speaker's choice and how they wanted to be invited into office. So those were just the two edits. Um, but pending that, if the mover and the second still stand, I'd be happy to.
Kristen, we could go to no video if that's gonna help your internet connection. Do you want us to go to no video?
Uh, no, I think you're fine. It's evened out now. Thank you, though.
Okay, so no more discussion, uh, favor the organizational minutes. Chris, uh, Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Oh, Bob's muted.
Bob's muted. It looked like yes. I think he's gonna clench his fist in a minute. There, good job, Bob.
Yes.
Yes. And Rich?
Yes.
Okay, so now we'll go back to the meetings of two twenty-three. Somebody wanna make a motion on them? Or was there anything? Any additions or?
I think they looked, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Donald's second.
John second that motion. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor. Of passed. Okay. Pre-requested. That would be Maureen.
Hi, this is Maureen. Hi, everyone. Um, I'm here to make two, uh, specific doable requests to the Polit Select Board. Um, one is that I've been looking over the website, the town plan, um, and any other social media, Polit Town Clerk, and I'm noticing that there is not really anything to state that we're a community that welcomes a diverse population of people. Sorry, my dog is chewing a bone in the background. Um, sorry about the noise. Um, and so I'm making a request that we, as a community, and you as a board, create a declaration of diversity and um, equity and inclusiveness. I do have some resources as to what something like this might look like. I think in some, it's important to, to make it known to the world that we are a welcoming community. Um, my second request is a declaration without action behind it has no teeth. And I sent a document to Kristen, which she did email, I think it was fairly later this evening, um.
Yes.
And it's from, let me just open it up. It's a document specific to Vermont, what Vermont municipalities can do to create equity and inclusion in our community. And so I'm asking that you all take a look at that document and revisit this in, on your, um, agenda in the next meeting. There are some very doable action steps that you can do, that we all can do, to, um, start to create some uh, just so that we, so that we make it clear that we welcome diversity and are committed to that as well as equity for everybody in this community.
Excellent. Okay, I haven't had a chance to review that yet, but I think we can, uh, we can continue this as old business on the next conversation. Who else? Uh, anybody else have any questions or comments that they'd like to, uh, address Maureen?
Um, yes, I would. I did have a chance to look through that document, just briefly, and there was one, there, there, I think there are a number of ideas in it that we could definitely go for. Um, one of them was just, like Maureen said, on our website and the images that we use and the wording we use, just making it clear specifically that we welcome people. I mean, I know personally, as a queer person, if I see a sign that says everyone is welcome, especially on a church, I don't always think it means me. Whereas if, um, a sign says LGBTQ people are welcome, then I know it does mean me. And I'm sure that there are other folks in various, um, communities who have a similar feeling. I know I always feel positively when I see someone has a sign up that says something like refugees are welcome. Because I know that that means that the place is a kind place that really wants to help people. And I definitely think that since our community has gotten some bad press lately for various things that have happened here, that it would behoove us to really make it known to the world that we're very welcoming. Um, the second thing is, which is really cool in this document, which I was wanting to do anyhow, even before I read this document, it mentions the idea of, of getting a sort of youth ambassador or, um, various, like, uh, youth advisory member for the various boards. I mean, I would love having a youth advisory member on the planning commission. And we might consider if we could get a youth advisory Select Board person. I think that would be a great way to get youth involved in the community. Anyway, I'm sure we can talk about this more, once everyone has had a chance to look at that and think about it. Thank you.
Well, it's very interesting, Maureen, because a little over a hundred years ago, that area that you lived in was, was exactly that. Um, there was a, a great deal of, of immigrants that came in from, from Eastern Europe to work in the quarries and stuff like that, like my grandfather, who couldn't speak English when he came here in the early nineteen hundreds, and they all came and worked in the quarries and made lives and raised families, and so it's, it's, it's kind of a rebirth. It's not anything new for our town, but it's, it's very, it's very good to keep that alive.
And especially with, um, we're all in a, having a really challenging time and a very challenging year, and I think with that, there tends to be, um, our people tend to fracture. Our community can be fractured. We get more divisive and to have, to have us as a community working to prevent that or to repair, um, what's, what's been, the damage that's been done in the hardships that we've all been having in various ways this year, I think it would be a really great step to moving forward.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Maureen? Okay, well, we'll review this and, and we'll keep this conversation going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any announcements, Kristen?
So, yep, this is Kristen. Just one announcement from my desk that I have been, um, busy with several different things, but since last week with the elections, I was working with Sean Ruck, who is our town's web coordinator, to keep the website updated, just, you know, speaking with him about who's been elected and things of that nature. So he is eager to help make the website easier to digest for all of our different community members, and I've been working with him a little bit on that, so I just wanted to let you all know, and that I've also been, I've gotten the email addresses established for our new board members, and I've also been working to just communicate different policies. Um, and kind of complete the circuit a bit, if you will, with different offices in town to make sure everybody is aware of who is who and how everybody can be contacted. So if anybody has any requests or questions, um, or suggestions for me, definitely let me know, but I am, my goal here is to try to make sure communication is um, clear and that everybody is feeling like they can easily settle into their new roles. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Um, the zoning administrators' report, could you read that, please?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yep, um, let me just have to pull it up. Okay, um, a report from our zoning administrator, Jonas Rosenthal. Since 2021, there have been four zoning permit approvals, two subdivisions, one garage, one agriculture accessory storage equipment structure. Working with the Planning Commission on distributing the required zoning ordinance documents to the adjoining towns, the Regional Planning Commission, and the Agency of Commerce and Community Development for the Planning Commission hearing on March twenty-second. Several calls have been received about the snowmobile special event coming up this weekend. Received questions about Airbnbs, received a question about hosting weddings on a piece of land as a business. The Development Review Board recently issued its decision on the perm revised zoning permit in the affirmative. The findings of fact, conclusions, and order on remand was authored by Merrill Bent. The zoning administrator was instructed to issue the permit by the DRB as per its decision. A question was received about rebuilding a structure located in the flood zone and the river corridor zone. The ZA needs more information from the potential buyer and will follow up with the caller. Rebuilds are allowed using the same footprint but cannot be expanded in this district. Any zoning permit needs to be reviewed and approved by the Department of Environment, Environmental Conservation before local approval. Rosenthal has asked Merrill Bent for a quick review on some case law involving some definitions. I have a planning commission meeting on Tuesday night in Castleton and on Tuesday, the twenty-third, and cannot attend the Select Board meetings. Please contact me by phone or email with any questions. Thank you, Jonas.
Any questions? All right, that's good. Keith, you're up. You gotta unmute, Keith.
How's that, better?
Oh, much better.
Okay. Kristen, you may have to help me out because I don't have a copy of what I sent, but, uh, basically, it's ongoing. We've been, we drew some stone the past couple of days and put a stockpile at the town garage in anticipation of mud season. Um, who knows what we're gonna have, but, uh, just wanted to get it done. We came from Wallingford and, uh, the MB may post the roads, so if they post the roads and we can't get through there to get to Wallingford, that wouldn't be an option. So we've got a couple hundred ton there that we've put up in the past couple of days. Uh, we've got the new truck. It's been oil undercoated. You should have the statement bill in your warrants tonight. It's two separate checks. Um, but it is as the bid price came in when he quoted us before the setup. Uh, we, I met, I've met with Tom Fuller. We're in preparation for the paving grant, um, which will be discussed when we have our spring meeting with V-Trans. Um, Jessica and John, I, I called John because I, I sent an email. It didn't go through to him, but Jessica, did you get yours? No? Okay, well, anyway, uh, this, uh, upcoming meeting tomorrow with the Regional Planning Commission is in person. Um, she's coming down to the library parking lot at nine thirty, and, um, it's discussion on our, uh, our water quality permit through the state, the municipal road general permit, and, um, we've got some deadlines coming up in 2022, and we've got some prior, priority areas, and we've gotta come up with some kind of a plan just to how we're gonna meet those deadlines and stay in compliance. So that's what she's coming to talk about, and, uh, I, if you're more than welcome to attend, Jessica, if it fits your schedule. So it's an in-person meeting, but it's gonna be outside, and you'll have to wear your mask and give people some space, but she has to have Wi-Fi, and she'll be able to bring, uh, ANR maps up on her computer and then we can target and look at the sites and, and see what fits our program over the next couple of work seasons. So that's, uh, those decisions probably won't be made tomorrow, but we'll have all the, uh, necessary information to decide where we're going. So, uh, what did I forget, Kristen?
Um, not much. You did well. You applied for the Army Corps' permit for the Herick Brook Road project?
Yeah, we had to have an Army Corps of Engineer permit for that. It's just a monitoring permit, and there was no, uh, no cost involved in that, so uh, it's basically a monitoring permit that we, it was necessary because we're working outside the parameters of the normal deadlines where we can work in the stream, so, which is June fifteenth to October first, and we need to show substantial completion by the end of June, so therefore we're, we're gonna have to start ahead of schedule. So, um, they'll probably do a site visit and let us know if they've got any concerns about what we have going on and how we're going to address them, but they'll just, basically, it's just notification and they'll monitor us as we go on forward with the project, so.
And I believe that's everything that you had submitted, Keith.
Uh, this is Jessica. Um, Keith, what was the time again for that tomorrow morning?
It's nine thirty tomorrow morning.
In the library parking lot?
In the library parking lot.
Okay, I'll try to be there, thanks.
Well, if it fits, and I, I know this is short notice, but I, I sent email out last Friday because that's when I made the appointment with her, and then it's came back and said John didn't get it, so I assumed you had. I called John, but I didn't, I didn't reach back out to you, so. Um, but it's, uh, yeah, I should be brief, maybe take an hour, probably an hour, and, um, it'll be certainly a learning curve that goes with it into what we're dealing with, with the new water quality standards that we have to comply with, so. Um, most of it is probably culvert outlets and bridge crossings and things like that, that, uh, we're non-compliant with right now, and they, it'll be on the Agency of Natural Resources map, and it'll be targeted in orange, red, green, and blue as to status and how, uh, you know, how urgent it is to get it taken care of, so. And there's probably grants available to do some of it, so it's just, it's a planning phase of it, so it'll be, uh, I'd like to have you there if you were able to be there.
Anybody have any other questions for Keith? Guess everything is good, then?
We like it that way.
Yeah, perfect. All right, Keith, thank you. Assessors' report, I guess, Kristen?
Planning Commission is next. Or no, sorry. Did we do Planning Commission?
We did not do Planning Commission.
No, I jumped, I went from zoning administrator right to Keith's. I guess I had my phone, uh, blown up too much. I wasn't reading it very well. Sorry about that, Jessica.
That's fine. This is Jessica. I did not submit a written report because we haven't met as a planning commission since, um, the last Select Board meeting. However, I did what, just wanna briefly follow up on what was in Jonas's report, that he and I have worked together to make the various documents that we need to send out to the neighboring towns, to their uh, planning commissions, and also to Rutland Regional. Um, so we have put together the warning and a report that had to be sent out and, and the document itself. So that is in process. All those other towns um, have gotten the document and, and submitted their response that they've gotten it. So we also put our ad into the Rutland Herald. Now, after we put it in the Rutland Herald, Jonas noticed that the Lakes Free Press is our one that we usually go with. Is that gonna be a problem?
It probably, we, um, will that, will we still be able to have it in the timeframe?
It was, it was last week already in the Rutland Herald.
We really, I don't know exactly how that works, but I know that we're supposed to choose a paper for that, and, and that's, the Free Press is the one that we've already, that we've always chosen.
I mean, we could put, we could try to put it in the Free Press this week. Um, just looking at my calendar to see if that would be in the fifteen days. Um, Free Press comes out on Friday. No, that wouldn't be within the fifteen days. I mean, we could do it. We could do it anyhow in addition to the one that we did last week.
I, I would think that we should do it in addition to, um, we can go by the, with the fact that it was in the Rutland Herald in a allotted amount of time.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't know that that's a, a technicality that would, would kick that out, in my opinion. It shouldn't, it was, it was published.
So, um, this is Jessica. Who would I speak to to find out who our normal contact person is with Lakes Free Press? Because Jonas knew who to contact with Rutland Reg, um, with Rutland Herald.
Uh, Deb usually handles all that, right, Kristen? Yes. Deb usually handles that, so if you could reach out to Deb, I'm sure she could get you directed in the right, to the right people.
All right, we'll do, thank you.
Yep, this is Deb. Um, Jessica, I have a, um, email group specifically for the Lakes Region Free Press that I can share with you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So yeah, so this is Jessica. To finish off my planning commission report, we are on track to have the public hearing at our next, regarding the updated bylaws at our next planning commission meeting. After that, presuming all goes well, we will then be passing it on to the Select Board. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the Jessica and the Planning Commission from anyone? Okay. Now we'll move on. Assessors, am I on track now, Kristen?
Yes, you are. This is Kristen. I am having some, having some technical difficulties over here tonight is actually what I'm having, but let me pull up the assessors' report. Standby. Okay, would you like for me to read it, Mike?
Please do.
Okay, so the Assessor's Office Report to the Polit Select Board, March ninth, 2021. Tax exempt status. Merck Forest Foundation Incorporated has submitted a request for tax exempt status for the property at fifty-six hundred Vermont Route one fifty-three in West Polit. Upon review of the application and required documents submitted in October of 2020, the assessor and property valuation and review have determined that they are eligible for tax exempt status for the 2021, 22 tax year. Inspections. The Assessor's Office will be performing inspections on permits for buildings and for previous construction, where we have only a percent complete, as well as for solar installations over fifty kilowatt. Installations below fifty kilowatts are exempt from taxation between now and the middle of April until we have completed all the inspections. Due to COVID restrictions, we will be notifying homeowners that we will be around doing exterior inspections and that we will not do interior inspections until the restrictions are lifted. Education. Karen has registered for the following Lister Assessor Training webinars. Lister Training three-ten and three-twelve, Current Use Training and My Vermont Tax three-twenty-two and three-twenty-four, Deed Reading and Real Estate Exemptions four-twenty-one, Grand List Cleanup four-twenty-eight, and Land Schedule five-twelve and five-nineteen. These courses are free of charge to listers and assessors. Karen will attend these courses via the internet from the Assessor's Office. Assessor's Office Hours. Lisa will continue to work remotely from home. Karen will continue to be in the office on Mondays and Wednesdays, and as necessary, to keep current with the office work. That's the end of the report.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? John, go ahead.
Yeah. Yes, I was wondering if anybody knows whether the exempt status, whether the town has to vote on that as they do with the fishing game and whatever other requests for tax exempt status. I can ask Karen. She'll be at one of her meetings tomorrow, but I was just curious.
That, that would make sense, John. I didn't even, that didn't even cross my mind. The fishing game always had to have a vote, was it every five years or something?
Something like that, yes. I think they still.
Churches.
This is Deb, and yes, we do vote every five years. I think we have four or five tax exempt properties in Polit and West Polit that we vote on in those five-year increments.
What happens in between, like this case?
I don't know. That would be a question for Karen, I guess. Uh, we, we, we've never added one since I've been town clerk, so, um, that's, that's, it's, it's probably a good idea to pursue it and find out what, what the situation is.
Okay, I'll talk with her next Monday when she's next in the, well, she'll be in the office tomorrow for the meeting, so.
This is Frank. Can I say something?
Did you have? Did you have your hand up too, Keith?
Yeah, I did. Uh, the only thing the voters have authority over making tax exempt is the local taxes. My guess is Merck Forest probably is a major nonprofit, and we can't, what I'm saying is we can't vote to make them tax exempt on the education tax. We can only vote to make them tax exempt on the local taxes. So I don't know what they're applying for or how it works out, but usually it goes to a vote, but that's only on the local taxes. When you vote to make them tax exempt, the rest of the taxpayers actually do pick up the education tax, the rest of the taxpayers in town, because it doesn't lower your grand list. And that's what your education tax is based on, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This is Frank. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Um, I delved into it a number of years ago, and my understanding was, and I could be incorrect, was that the, uh, Select Board still has discretion on whether or not they would want to put that voting in place. Because of the fact that Keith just explained. However, the net difference doesn't make anything. And I got into a discussion with Keith's dad about this, is that it all comes out in the wash one way or the other. And it doesn't result in an increase in the tax to go exempt because they've always been exempt. So that was pretty much it. And I think that no matter what happens, the Select Board still has discretion on whether or not they want to do it or not, but or just to let it go and have tax exempt be the rule, rule of the town. That was my understanding way back when we, I went into it and I got into discussions with people in Mount Pilgrim about this whole thing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. John, you'll get some more clarification from, I can't, Karen, about that, please?
Yes, I will. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments regarding the list, assessors report? Okay. And who's up next? Town Clerk's memo. Deb?
I only have a couple of things and they're mostly directed, well, some for all of you and some for Bob. We, I need you as a board to approve the liquor license for the Polat Station. She finally got hers to me. And Bob, the, there was one document in the packet for, I think the barn that was missed, so that just needs to be signed tomorrow. And I have a pile of fleet highway permits on the table for you to sign as well. So those are really the only things that I have for tonight. So I need you to approve the Polat Station liquor license.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve the liquor license for the Polat Station?
This is Jessica. I'll move that we do that.
Okay. And John, was that a second?
That's fine.
Okay. Jessica and John, move to approve the liquor license for the Polat Station? Any more discussion? All in favor, Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay. Approved. You'll sign that, Bob, when you sign the rest of the documents.
Yep, and I have it all. I have the pages marked for you. We had a 45% voter turnout for the town meeting. That's just a statistic that I might not have had at the organizational meeting. Everything went really well. We had a fantastic group of people working the election for which I'm extremely grateful. And everything seems to have gone pretty smoothly. And if anybody has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them because I may check out of the meeting a little early.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Deb?
This is Jessica. I don't have a question, but I do have a, I want to add to thanking Deb and everybody who worked at the, for the election. Two of the folks who live in my house are newer Vermonters. They moved here last fall. And they hadn't voted here in Vermont before, and they were kind of stressed about how they might need to bring their ID or how they would do this and whether it would work out. And they really wanted to vote and they went down and it was smooth and they felt welcome. So I want to give extra kudos to everybody who was working there during the election.
Thank you, Jessica.
Great to hear.
I had a,
Great to hear.
Yeah, and I had a nice chat with that couple. They were fun, too.
All right. Well, thank you very much for all your hard work on that, pulling that all off. Deb, have a good night.
Thank you. I'll be here for a few more minutes, but I'll be checking out a little bit. Thank you, everybody.
And Town Treasurer's Memo.
This is Kristen. The Treasurer's Memo submitted by Julie Mack for March 9th, 2021. There are three warrants to be signed. Payroll for the week was $12,849.68. The total accounts payable was $83,138.15. And also the final appropriations was $317,939. Monies from the general fund, $39,707.23. Highway, $54,512.91. Wastewater, $1,0767.69. Appropriations in the amount of $317,939 came from the general fund. Total general fund monies spent, $357,646.23. The third installment of wastewater tax is due tomorrow, 310, 2021 exclamation point. I have not received final cash flow info from Vermont, so the final school payment is not included today. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Do I hear a motion to pay the warrant? All right, John's smiling.
Mike, this is Bob. I just wanted to let Rich and Jessica know because I'm the one that goes in and signs the warrants. On your behalf, I usually hold back and I reserve from making a motion to accept them, if that makes any sense. So you folks can have at it.
Thanks for letting us know. I've just been jumping on making motions, so I figured I'd let someone else.
You're doing great, too.
Well, the other thing is when we're in in-person meetings, I give Bob a shove, usually in the elbow and the arm to to get him to wake up every now and then to make a motion to, so.
And this is Kristen. I know on, in my first meeting when I was here taking the minutes, when everybody was talking about warrants, I had absolutely no idea what they were talking about. So essentially, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that is the motion to pay the bills. So just figured if, if anybody else might benefit from that moment when I was like, cool warrants, you know, but so just, just FYI.
So John made a motion. Do I hear a second?
This is Rich. I'll second that.
Okay, good. Any more discussion? All in favor, Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's approved. Thank you. Is there anything from the Emergency Management Director?
Yes, this is Kristen. Bob Morlino submitted a report from the Emergency Management Director's Office. The COVID-19 updates continue to be posted daily to the town's Facebook page to keep residents informed. He's participated in three COVID-19 conference calls with Emergency Management Services of Vermont and other emergency entities. And he submitted three Tier 2 reports for the town, for town of Polat locations to the state of Vermont. And while I'm speaking, there's nothing to report from the health officer's desk.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? I guess we're good. Wastewater. Could you read that little? From Jill, please?
Yep. Sorry, let me just pull it up. Okay, so just for Jessica and Rich. So Jill Marsano is in charge of a company called Vermont Utility Management Services and she manages the wastewater treatment facility in West Polat. I did forward you all this update that I'm about to read aloud, but just so you know. So here are the Polat Wastewater Treatment Facility subdivision, submission files and the V Tums updates for February 2021. I spoke with Jenny Oster earlier this week and she indicated that she will be preparing and sending a draft scope and fee for the sludge storage modifications that went out to RFQ last year that her firm already prepared a study for. Her recommendation is to apply for the RD funding block in December of this year and have the bond vote in March of 2022. After that, they would begin the full PER design, et cetera, that pushes construction to 2023 or later. I'm thinking that we may want to try the minor modifications we proposed that were approved by Shay Miller at the state last year, since it seems like this upgrade is more than two years away from any built project. Please let me know your thoughts. Future priorities, RFQ. Jenny Oster is sending over a proposed scope and fee in the next few weeks with recommendation to apply for the RD program in December of 2021 for Bonvo in March of 2022. Scheduled replacement for air valve near the end of Force Main from Spruce Gum Pump Station. Scheduled Spruce Gum Pump Station repair and replace pump number one. Scheduled jetting of collection system to get rid of solids building up to prevent future unwelcome clogs. As always, please let me know if you have any questions. Jill Marsano, owner, president, Vermont Utility Management Services. Thank you.
Okay, to bring you, uh, new members up to speed, so to speak, is that about, I guess it was about seven years ago, we did a refurbishment because our, our old, our old process was, was deemed obsolete and, and time to be replaced by the state. It was working quite fine, but it, it was definitely war. And the new system that was designed by Green Mountain Engineers and installed has worked very, very poorly since it was installed. We've, we've had a great deal of problems with the RBCs. They were not built very strong. They had to both be rebuilt. But one of the biggest problems is we find that the clarifiers are, are far too small. So we end up getting a lot of, I guess, they call it flock, I guess, right, Keith? That, that kind of floats in the, in the, in the affluent after it's been processed and, and that, and the flock will, will get on the UV lights. And it will make the lights dirty and then the UV doesn't get the penetration required. So we're not always getting our affluent as pure as possible. In the beginning, we had quite a lot of trouble failing our, our, I was like E coli tests, so now that it takes a great deal of maintenance to keep the UV lights right. And what, and after Jill had taken over, she's, she's been working quite hard to come up with a system that we can correct this so that it works much more effectively. And one of the, one of the things that she finds is probably one of our, our major problems is everything, the sludge that we get off of everything, out of the clarifiers and all that, we're pumping it back in to start and running it through the process again. So we just keep, we just can't, kind of keep building more and more. So what, she's been working with a friend of hers, Jenny Oster, who works for an engineering company. And we went and we had proposals from three different engineering companies and, and stuff. But what they feel is a, a sludge tank, it would be independent. So everything that was, all the sludge that was pumped off, instead of trying to circulate it back through and, and get everything grubby again, would go into its own tank and get, the water would get decanted off it, so that that, that would have a chance to settle out and then we could just send straight heavy sludge. And it would keep the process much better because we wouldn't keep trying to introduce the sludge into our system. It would just be fresh. Influent. So that's kind of a, a brief synopsis. There's, there's several emails of what's going on that, as I, as I come across, I'll dig through and, and find some of this information and share with you guys so that you can, you can see, but the other, the other parts of her story there, we got a $15,000 line item to, for upgrades in the wastewater treatment system. The pumps and the Spruce Gum Pump Station are, one of them is, I don't even think it's working right now. The, the system that holds them in place, it's a slide system so they can pull them in and out. It's all rotten and, and and becoming quite deteriorated. So there's a quite a deal, a great deal of work to have both pumps fully functional up there. There's the jetting of the mains, as we found out last summer. They're starting to get a little bit of buildup in spots in some of the mains. So they feel that after, I guess it's, oh, it's almost 40 years. It's time to power jet the mains to get them all cleared and make sure there's, the buildup is gone because we had a problem that it backed up into someone's house last summer. So that just brought that to our attention. And also that, that valve where it's pumped down from Spruce Gum, it was leaking during that process too. So there's like two things all going on at once. But, and that's the whole deal and there's, there's quite, there, there's a potential for some very good funding available to RD because we have had a few violations from the state that kind of, it, it gives us a little bit more leverage, so it, we may be able to get better than, than 50% funding even. So these are all things that we're trying to work with, but our next step is after, after the, they come up with a, a plan and, and we have accurate numbers and stuff. It has to go, we have to apply to our rural water. And, and they, and they can, they could, if we have a bond vote from the town that says it's okay, so we get the permission from the town to do it, and then we can borrow the money from them and a lot of it can be forgiven. So it could turn into a, a very reasonable way to, to make our system work much better. So that's, that's kind of the, a brief story about what's going on at the sewage treatment plant right now. But there's, there's much more and, and Jill is, is excellent. And if any of you guys had any questions, if you just wanted to send her an email or something, she would, she would be more than happy to explain anything to you. And she's, she's been at it for quite a few years. She's very, very knowledgeable in, in these types of systems. She does water treatment and, and sewage, so. That's where we're at with that.
Thank you for all that information, Mike. I guess I would just have one question, which would be, what's the timeframe for this ma, the one you talked about with the sludge tank, this sort of major repair? Are we looking to, did, it sounded like we're looking to vote on the bond for that next year and then do it after?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that's the way they're looking because the money wouldn't come out till December next year from rural development. And, and then, then we'd have the bond vote and, and would be a project of 2022. But earlier, like about a year ago, probably before we, we went to this avenue, there was some discussion about possibly, and I know, I believe, I believe we were going to cut a couple of holes through a couple of the dividers and in the tank itself and, and put some pipes in to help equalize and get more of the decanted water and the sludge to settle. Am I kind of on board with that, Keith? I? Keith?
Yes, you are, Mike. Yeah, they were going to, it's a whole series of tanks on each side under, in the basement of that project over there. And they were going to try to poke some holes in one so that they could, you make it a predominantly sludge storage tank instead of being a series of tanks. They were going to take the end one out of the series and use that for sludge. But I guess there's anticipation that it's not big enough to, to do that and still de-water it and not make more sludge and have too much to pump. So I, I think what they're, the idea of the new tank is that it's going to give you more space so that you can actually put your sludge in there. So that you can actually put your sludge in there and then you can de-water it and concentrate that sludge right down to the bare minimum. And without, that you've got to haul away and not reprocess and, and the addition of the polymer that they've been doing also. When you treat it with the polymer and then you dump that back into the headworks, it, it creates digestion problems all the way through the process. So in the end result, it may not be accomplishing what you're trying to there. It's not supposed to bond to those flocks that you're there and then settle them to the bottom and it's apparently not doing that. And you're obviously supercharging the polymer because you're dumping your polymer back into your headworks as well. And bringing it all the way back through the system, so it, it may be creating some digestion problems. This way your polymer will go into a dedicated tank and that should settle it out. You won't have those settleable solids that are floating in there and causing disruption in your ultraviolet treatment, your disinfection, so. I hope I didn't confuse people more, but.
All right, thank you Keith, I, I appreciate that input, so. Kristen?
Yep, Mike, is there anything that you want me to follow up with Jill on, on all of this? Like regarding what she might be specifically talking about regarding the minor modifications or have you already done that?
I will, uh, I will reach out to her in the next week or two and. And we'll go start working through that process again to see if that's something that we can do and. You know, that Shay Miller, the guy from the, the state was okay with, so. It, it seemed like a reasonable way to, uh, to attempt to see if, if this is, is. We're, we're headed on the right track.
Okay.
So.
This is Frank with a question.
I'll read that. Yes, Frank.
Uh, the old Dutchie's property. Does, do the consultants? Or do they know that that's available for use and?
Absolutely.
Ideas for it?
Yes, yes, that's, they're, they're well aware that all that property belongs to us and. And if that, if that's a feasible option, it may, it may be a, a site for a storage tank, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, has anybody else got anything? Um, I guess we're on to old business.
Yes.
Anybody got anything under old business? Kristen does.
So I, so, um, following the conversations about the different policies. Um, at the organizational meeting, just briefly that came up, I had sent you all, sent all the board members the. Personnel policy, the conflict of interest policy, the rules of procedure. And just recently, just before the meeting, I sent you all the purchasing policy, so I would imagine unless you're lightning fast. You might not have had a chance to get to that one, but as far as I know, the rules of, select board rules of procedure. And conflict of interest policy are the only two that require an annual adoption from the board members. And the personnel policy and purchasing policy are more for your information. I could be wrong on the purchasing policy bit. But anyhow, just wanting to bring that up under old business and see if you felt. You all might like to make any motions about those or if you. Wanted to review or have a discussion.
Everybody look at, have a chance to look them over?
This is Rich, yeah, I, I looked him over, uh, earlier today. Now Kristen, is that, is that something that just needs to be signed and, and scanned back to you or what do you want us to do with that?
So this is Kristen. In previous years, um, at the meetings when they've been in person. The board members have all signed the rules of procedure and the conflict of interest policy and also a motion has been made. Mike or? I don't know if you have any.
I would say that we could just make a motion to approve the conflict of interest in the rule, uh. Rules of procedure.
Yeah.
And then Bob could be our, our chosen signature. So does that sound like you're making a motion that we accept those, those rules of procedure in the conflict of interest policy for this year, Rich?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
And this is Jessica. I was also able to look at them and I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion made in second for the conflict of interest in the rules of procedure. Is there more discussion? All in favor, Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Approved, thank you.
Is, this is Kristen again. You'll have to refresh my memory. Is the purchasing policy something that also required that? Or is that something that you all just? Best review?
Honestly, I, I can't really remember for sure if it was something that was, that was once established. And it needed to be updated every year or if it's something that we just have.
I was under, Mike, this is Bob. I was under the impression that it was consistent and unless we chose to change it. I, I thought it, I thought it was ongoing.
All right, that seems, I believe that's kind of the way I saw it. So, too, so.
This is John. That's the way it's stated in the last sentence of it. It says the foregoing policy is hereby adopted by the, the select board of the town of Blank Vermont. This day of this year and is effective as of this date until amended or repealed. So it's just.
Perfect. Great, thank you. Any other new business? All right, I got some. Appears that we're officially the owner of the three five five four Route one fifty-three property. So. Dave Ricard is gone and investigated and he sent an affidavit that we've shared with the, the courts. That said that the people are out. And I talked to Merrill last week and she said that basically the only thing we have left to do is to go there. Someone needs to go there and. Look and see if they feel that there's anything there of any value. And if there is, we need to make a reasonable effort to try and give it back to the owners. But if, if someone goes there and feels that everything is, is just straight up garbage. Well, then it's time to, uh. To move forward with getting the property cleaned up so we can get rid of it. So. Do we have any volunteers for anybody that wants to swing in there and check that going out and see if it's? It'd probably be good if there's at least two people that, that went.
Mike, this is Rich. I would, uh, I'll do that.
Okay.
Like this is Bob, I would, I would be willing to if, unless someone else wants to fight over it.
No, that, that sounds like a good plan. You guys run down there and if you. If you don't see anything that has any, any value for it. Then, then we need to dis, uh, we, we need to discuss right now who we're gonna get to clear that out. Because I think that that trailer looks rough enough. I mean, you guys will have a better idea after you evaluate it. But I think that everything needs to go and it needs to be sold as a lot. And my opinion.
A lot with a septic and a well.
Right, right, a very buildable how, a, a very buildable lot. Um, they could put, they could put a new trailer in there, whatever. We can't, we can't put any covenant in the, in the deed that said that they need to build a house there. Um, I found that out. That it can't be any, we can't put anything that's more restrictive than our zoning regulations, so. So that's, that's where we're at with that. I was hoping that we could encourage somebody to build a house there. That was a little bit more in character of the neighborhood, but. We'll, we'll see what happens when we. When we sell, Keith? Do you have a question?
How big is that lot?
I, I don't know. The house, the house that was there was pretty close to the road as I remember. But. I'm not really sure what size.
Might be tough to build something in there and meet the standoffs is. What I'm just curious about, that's all. It's, uh, you know.
It may be a long, narrow house, Keith.
It may have to be, it may be why the mobile home fit to build there, but it, yeah, I don't know, but certainly that wants to be looked into because, uh. Yeah, buyer beware, I guess, but it's, uh, it may not meet, meet setbacks, so.
So then. If it doesn't meet a setback, if there's a trailer there already, they can put another trailer there, right?
Well, I, I guess, yeah, it would be under discussion, pre-existing non-conforming in that respect, Mike. And the replacement of the trailer is one thing, but the building of a new structure with a different footprint. If it can't meet the setbacks, it may not be possible. That's a question for Jonas and I don't want to answer his questions, but, uh.
Right.
Well, this is Jessica. I, um, it occurs to me that if there are, if the setbacks are so strict that people can't build houses on lots. Maybe the, um, maybe it's for the planning commission to look, relook at the setbacks in West Polit and see if they fit what we need.
It would be, it would be village commercial zoning, so it would be the minimum setback requirement. But I think it's still fifteen feet from the property line. And, you know, I, I don't know where the property lines, I'm just, just thinking ahead, that's all, Jessica. And I may be completely off track, but I, I know it's a, it's a narrow lot with the brook right beside it on one side. It would be depending on where the lot is between the trailer and the neighbor's house, uh. What, what could go in there and be compliant, that's all, so. I don't, I don't know any facts. I'm just asking questions, so.
This is Frank.
Go ahead, Frank.
This, the hearing for the, at the planning commission is on the unified bylaw, changes some amendments, some cleaning up. That's gonna be done at your, that this, you know, we're having hearing at the planning commission on and it will then eh, end up at the select board. Uh, is estate change regarding to multi-units? Uh, they don't want discrimination against multi-unit. And. One of the concepts I was for when I was public for the planning commission to look at was. A, the usage of a village overlay, which they do in other towns. Which, because the town of Polit has a slot size about a quarter acre per unit. Um, for multi-unit. And none of the lots would meet that in West Polit. And so, and the setbacks would come into picture there too, so that whole thing is gonna be reviewed in the future by the planning commission. Going forward to make it reasonable for what is historically has been happening in West Polit for a hundred years, probably. Which is a little different from the rest of the, the town. And the reason for the quarter acre per unit rule for the whole town was because of, of a need to put in septic on a lot. And, uh, West Polit has a sewer.
So that's something for the planning commission to take up then, Frank. It's, it's kind of digressing from the subject of this trailer at this point, so. I, I understand your point and it's a very valid point, but it seems like that's something for the planning commission to take up.
That's correct, and for now, the rules that apply would be what Keith said, uh, earlier. Right.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
You're welcome, thank you.
Is anybody else? So you guys will go check that out. Um, if there's any way we can lock the door or maybe if we just need to throw a hasp on it or something, that would be a good idea. But you give us a valuation at the next meeting and then we'll decide how we want to handle it. That would be great, thank you. Any other older unfinished business, uh, Kristen, that you can think of? Not set, okay, cool. Any new business?
Well, this is Jessica. I have something I wanted to bring up and I don't, I guess new business is where it would fit. Um, it had to do with. Uh, with communicating with people in our town. Cause I was, I've been thinking about this a lot since I decided to run for select board about how it's, and, and it's always the same people who we hear from. Right? And I know that this is something that Sarah Young has been working with, with the connectors group that I'm also involved with. And they're looking for more folks to become involved with civic organizations here in Polit. Cause again, we don't always have a lot of people who want to be involved with the planning commission or with the historical society. And in that group, we've been kind of trying to think of ways especially to reach younger people. And I would like to personally find a way and I don't, and so I'm pitching this here in case anyone else on the select board wants to. Make a project of this, but I want to find a way to get feedback from people in the town who we don't normally hear from. And, uh, some, some categories of people I think that we don't often hear from include young people. You know, which I think Maureen had brought up earlier as well. It would be good to find a way that we could get some. Get some thoughts by the, by, by high school students perhaps about what they are looking for in the future for our town. And also just for, for folks who live here who are say like under thirty-five or forty, right? You know, younger people who are living in town. Was also thinking about renters. We hear a lot from homeowners and about what they want landowners, but renters also. You know, we've got, we do have a number of renters in our town and I'd like to hear from them, so. I, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is I'd like to try over the next. Year to put together some sort of focused listening groups with different stakeholders in our town who don't usually show up. And I'm not entirely sure how I'm going to find them to get them to show up if they don't normally show up, but I'm, so I'm gonna be trying to get creative here. Might involve, once we can do that, going a little door to door, might involve sending out flyers, might involve contacting the high schools to see if they can. You know, help me get in touch with high school students. I don't know if this sort of, um, soliciting feedback from people who don't normally give it. Is something that anyone else would want to be involved with or if you just wanna give me your blessing and say, go do it, Jessica.
Well, uh, it certainly, I mean, it's important to have the town feedback from everyone of, you know, of every, a broad range. So I, I guess a, as you, uh, as you learn more about what you're gonna need, then, then maybe we can. It'd be more likely to, to understand what we'd need to do to help. So, does anybody have any problem with Jessica doing more research on this and trying to, uh. Come up with a plan on, and how to, how to get the information that we're looking for? Uh, I think you got, you got a green light, Jessica, so whatever, uh, you could start working on that and, and. As, as you, uh, as you come to, uh, some things that we can help you with, you can bring it up and we can, uh, we can work from there.
Thank you. Well, I'll report back as I, as I have clearer plans.
Excellent, thank you. So if there's no other new business, I guess we're.
Maureen has a hand raised, Mike.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Maureen?
Maureen, um, I just wanted to comment on what Jessica brought up. I have been watching and I'm aware of a lot of workshops. Through the Vermont Rural Development Council online. They actually have a library of workshops and many of them. In our, um, regarding community engagement and I really think that. Every member of the select board should be taking some time to educate themselves about community engagement and community leadership. Because this is, this is a very important issue for us to all be get engaged. As a, as a single mother. Um, with one income household, you know, there were many, many years where I felt invisible. And I know that there are other people in the community who are feeling that way right now and we need to make it clear to them that their voice is important.
Okay, well, thank you for that. That's, uh, some good resources available. Anything else? Kristen?
This is Kristen, um, nothing else and I just did want to extend my assistance in any sort of efforts that you might have. And I do think that this community has always been very community minded and I. this community has always been very community minded. And I think that the last year of COVID and the ups and downs that that has brought has posed many challenges. And so I think that it's now that we're all getting into the ebb and flow, it's, it'll be nice to be able to regroup and reconnect. So any way that I can help, let me know. Um, and there's no other I, agenda items.
Okay, so now.
Except for public comments, sorry.
Public. So does anybody have any public comment tonight? I'm not seeing anything. All right. So if we don't have any public comment, no one has anything to, to offer, then I guess we know what we gotta do.
I'll make a motion. We, uh, call it a night.
All right. Do I have a second on that motion?
Mike, this is Rich. I'll second that.
All right. Thank you, Rich. Motion made in second. All in favor, Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone for coming. Have a good night. We'll see you in two weeks.